Good afternoon. This is Kathleen Drew, Chair of the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Meeting, calling our special meeting on the Horse Heaven Wind Farm to order. Ms. Grant, will you call the role?
Department of Commerce. Department of Ecology.
Eliot Livingston.
Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Mike Livingston, present.
Department of Natural Resources.
Lenny Young, present.
Utilities and Transportation Commission.
Stacy Brewster, present.
For local government and optional state agency for the Horse Heaven Project for Benton County, Ed Brost.
Ed Brost is present.
Assistant Attorney Generals, John Thompson.
Present.
And Zach Packard.
Present.
I'm Minister of Law Judge, Adam Torum. He has informed me that he is online and present. And I will call council staff who may speak today, Sonia Bumpus.
Present.
Amy Hoffgemeyer.
Present.
Amy Moon.
Amy Moon, present.
And Sean Green. And is there anyone here for the Council for the Environment?
Yes, Sarah Reinaveld is present.
Thank you, Chair. There is a quorum.
Thank you all. My first announcement is that since we are unable, even though we had expected to have all our council members here, we will be scheduling a meeting next week to take a vote. I'm very sorry, but one member was unexpectedly unavailable at the last minute. So in order to give her the opportunity to vote as well, we will be having a short meeting to conduct a vote when all members are available. However, we will go ahead and have our discussion today. And just to remind everybody where we are in this process. I don't, I think we all know that Governor Insley directed the council to reconsider the conditions and mitigation in its recommendation in favor of an approach to mitigation that is more narrowly tailored to the specific impacts identified. That is what we have been working the past couple of months forward to. I know that he also stated that the record is robust and satisfactory from my perspective for the purposes of citing and permitting the proposed project. And I do want to say at this point that we've heard a lot from multiple parties about taking up the issue of need for the project, which was not considered in the project adjudication. And we are not taking that up. We are focusing our response on approaching the mitigation more narrowly tailored to specific impacts. So I wanted to make that statement on the record. We did not take up the issue of need. We are not taking it up in this proceeding. So at this point, I want to ask the staff to summarize the information that went out to all the council members and that the public had a chance to review for changes in the council in the proposed changes to the SCA for council reconsideration. The council at our last meeting on this subject directed the staff to draft proposed changes to the SCA. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Green and Ms. Hoffgemeyer to maybe give us a brief overview of what those changes in the SCA are.
Okay. There were, there were essentially four changes to mitigation measures from the initial draft SCA that was submitted to the governor's office to the current version provided to the council and the public. The first is the Habitat 1 mitigation measure, where the original draft version had included a requirement that project components be cited outside of medium or higher linkage wildlife movement corridors. That version has been reverted to the version of Habitat 1 that was included in the final environmental impact statement, which is a requirement that the applicant provide a corridor mitigation plan for any components cited in those same movement corridors. And this plan would include features to accommodate wildlife movement across linear project components, impact reduction measures, restoration monitoring, and adaptive management, but does not include the exclusion areas associated.
Okay, let's pause right there to see if council members have any questions. Or would like to discuss that. Okay, seeing none, let's go on to the species.
Livingston raises his hand.
Who did?
Yeah, sure, Drew. Thanks. I, so, the, this pullback from the protection levels that we had put in the original SCA for medium to high-quality habitat corridors is certainly one that concerns me, given the limited amount of habitat connectivity that we do have in the Horse Heaven Hills. And some of these areas are the last remaining connections. So though I appreciate, you know, going back to the EIS and what's in there, and I trust that there'll be a lot of hard work going into making sure that there's a good plan put in place in the event that there has to be some diminishment of those corridors. I just wanted to express that that is a concern of mine, veering away from what the SCA that we had recommended to the governor back in the spring. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
I do. So let's talk about that a little bit, and I appreciate that. So as we look at this corridor mitigation plan, my understanding is that that will be developed with the P tag. Is that correct? Or is this something that the applicant would put forward to that group for review?
I'm not sure whether the P tag is explicitly mentioned in this mitigation measure, but it is a plan that the applicant would develop and submit to EFSEC for approval.
To EFSEC. Okay. So that would then involve our EFSEC staff reviewing it in consultation with our agencies that usually give us input as well as with consultants who are on board to help us review that. Is that how you see that process moving forward?
Yes, that's correct. We would consult with subject matter experts from other state agencies as well as consultants that are employed by EFSEC.
And will it include the intent that there will be a path through the project for wildlife?
Yes, the goal is to reduce project impacts as much as possible or as much as practical for barriers to wildlife movement. And that can include requirements to install specific components that would allow for easier wildlife movement, such as larger culverts or potentially bridges or road crossings.
Okay. I just wanted to get on the record what our expectations as an agency for how that process would occur. How we would conduct the process, let me say. I do hear your concerns and I understand them. Are there comments other people would like to make or questions? Okay. Let's go on to the next item that is changed.
The next mitigation measure that has changed from the initial SCA draft is Species 5, which is specific to the fruginus hawk. The original, or the version of Species 5 that was submitted to the governor's office included a two-mile buffer for all primary project components to all documented fruginus hawk nests within two miles of the project lease area. This included 56 nests from the WDFW Priority Habitat and Species dataset and an additional two nests that were identified in applicant surveys. The version of Species 5 included in the draft SCA available to the council today reduces that two-mile exclusion area to a 0.6-mile exclusion area or 1 km, but additionally takes language from the final environmental impacts statement version of this measure wherein any historic or any identified nest that is, where the nesting site is still available and sufficient foraging habitat is viable within that two-mile buffer, those nests would be provided the full two-mile buffer from the original version, or from the governor's version, the version of the SCA submitted to the governor. So to reiterate, all documented nests are provided at least a 0.6-mile buffer. Nests where the nesting site is still available and foraging habitat is viable are provided the two-mile buffer. And that applies to primary project components, which are wind turbines, solar arrays, and besses. Apart from the eastern bess, where language was added to specifically exclude that one from this version of Species 5 as relocating it away from where it is currently located on disturbed habitat would increase habitat impacts with no discernible mitigative effect as a result. So in that case, it was better to leave it where it is.
Okay. Are there questions from council members or comments? I want to talk a little bit about the process for this measure. How would this measure be implemented?
So the process that it would go through is a pre-operational technical advisory group would be founded, composed of subject matter experts from other state agencies as well as independent experts and other potentially tribal individuals or individuals from local government if it's deemed justifiable. And that P tag would work with EFSEC and the applicant to identify a process for determining habitat viability. And the P tag and the applicant would work to identify which of the documented nests meet or don't meet the two criteria for providing the full two-mile buffer. Submit that guidance to EFSEC for consideration. And EFSEC would make the final determination on which nests would receive 8.6-mile buffer and which nests would receive a full two-mile buffer.
So the P tag is not making any decisions. Is that correct?
That is correct. The P tag is an advisory body. It has no decision-making authority.
EFSEC will make the decisions.
Correct.
And secondly, I'll ask Ms. Hoffgemeyer. Is this a new concept that we've never implemented before? Has this been implemented before by EFSEC?
It has a slightly different name, but EFSEC has used what is functionally a pre-construction, still Technical Advisory Group, or I'm sorry, Technical Advisory Committee or TAC for multiple projects. And multiple projects have had these groups convene prior to the start of construction. Some of the public comments that were received prior in the review of this project raised concerns about whether or not the TAC started before or after operations of the facility. But EFSEC has a history of requiring these groups to provide advice and guidance to EFSEC as the decision-maker, starting prior to the start of construction for several projects.
Okay, so this is not at all unusual in its makeup or use or implementation in this project. Mr. Young?
Would there be a single P tag that would be addressing different aspects of the project? Or would there be more than one P tag with a P tag, for example, for fruginus hawk, focused just on fruginus hawk?
So the intention is that there is a single body that operates as the P tag. It's possible that membership may change depending on which of the mitigation measures that the P tag is working on at any one time. For instance, a fruginus hawk expert might not be as needed for some of the other mitigation measures that the P tag will be considering. But it is, it is the goal to only have a single body that may have some rotating numbers.
How would the P tag members be selected?
It would be selected by EFSEC essentially as the decision-maker, but we would take into consideration where expertise might be necessary. Where it's possible, we would include subject matter experts from other state agencies where there may be a lack of expertise or a lack of availability. We would contract independent experts.
And if I could jump in here. Historically, we have required that the facilities put together and convene their tax, but that is with EFSEC concurrence on membership.
Could you clarify that when you say the facilities do the selection? Who are the facilities?
So for example, Columbia Solar Wild Horse have active tax and they send out meeting invites, do the scheduling, lead the meetings, send out minutes. And so they sort of take the lead in the scheduling and agendas and whatnot. And EFSEC still retains participation and oversight of decisions. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. That sounds more like mechanics of operating the tag after the tag has been selected. Who would actually select? How would the SAG members actually be selected?
So generally, we request participation from the desired entities. For example, DFW, US Fish, Ecology. And then within those agencies, they decide who to appoint for the project. And we have left that up to those bodies' discretion as to who their actual member is.
Okay, so it'd be more contacting organizations that EFSEC feels should be represented on the tag? And those organizations would then select the individuals that would represent them on the tag?
Correct.
Okay. And then again, on the sort of the managerial aspect of the tag, when you refer to the facilities, in this case, would the facilities mean the applicant scout clean energy?
Correct.
We, I think it's a term that if approved, the applicant becomes a certificated facility in our EFSEC language.
Okay, great.
That's the comparison. Yes.
Understood. And thank you for answers to my questions.
Okay, certainly. Are there other questions, Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. You know, from the beginning, the P tag approach has concerned me just because it leaves a lot of questions unanswered. Interesting reading through comments in the last couple of days. I've seen some concerns expressed on both sides of this issue. And so I'm curious, if this goes forward as the new draft is described it, one of the questions has been, how do we develop the criteria to determine the viability or the suitability of foraging habitat and nesting habitat? What's the thought on staff's approach to that? Obviously, we're going to need wildlife experts adding to that conversation, but how would you go about that?
Yeah, so that process is certainly going to be involved. And that's why we wanted to wait until the P tag was operational before we got too deep in the weeds on that. The language within Species 5 includes a couple of examples of foraging habitat that might be considered no longer viable, such as those that have experienced large landscape scale conversion into residential or agricultural. But the development of that viability criteria for foraging habitat is something that the subject matter experts within the P tag will be very helpful in determining. Ultimately, it will be EFSEC's decision as to what those criteria are and how they are applied to the nest. But we will certainly give credence to guidance that we receive from the P tag.
Okay, thank you. That's it for, well, let me ask one more question. I'm sorry, Councilman Young there, jumping on. So, you know, one of the things that has, for me.
You're muted.
I apologize. Sorry about that. All this time using Teams and I don't know how to do it. Anyway, so one of the things I was stating was that some of the other values that we've been working on to protect that have been inclusive of a two-mile buffer around fruginus hawk nest, including TCPs and view shed. You know, as we go through this, this leaves just this big question mark. If we use the best available science for assessing fruginus hawk territories and conclude, you know, I don't know what percentage of these. I have no idea. It could be zero. It could be 10%, 20% of them. I don't know. But then that leaves a question on the other values that we've discussed as important, particularly in our findings and in our draft SCA to the governor back in April. It seems like it just leaves a lot of questions for us in what those values will be protected or not going forward. So I guess I'm just expressing the concern of not addressing those other issues with this approach. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll briefly say, and then I'll get to Mr. Young's next question, that frankly, as Chair of this council in working with the staff on developing this set of narrowing the mitigations, I thought about that quite a bit to determine how to approach each of these impacts individually. And so we do, I don't have the same extent as we had before as we looked at the combination. But there is some mitigation for many, for a few of those issues. I think the visual one is more dependent on the others. And perhaps that final determination of the viability of the hogs. But I would still say that the way this is structured will eliminate some of the most visible turbines. Is that something that? I won't ask Sean to comment on that. That's my opinion. I'll leave it at that. And certainly what I was striving to accomplish. Mr. Young?
I don't have any other question at this time.
You want to do it to the next measure?
Okay, let's go on to the next measure.
Okay. The next change in mitigation from the previous version of the SCA is a new measure that was incorporated into this version. It is labeled as Cultural Resources 3, and it is a requirement that all wind turbines be precluded from being sighted within one mile of the geographic drop-off at the top of Weber Canyon. This was done in response to TCP concerns that were identified by the Yakima Nation associated with Weber Canyon. And 17 of the proposed turbines would be affected by this mitigation measure. And they would need to either be relocated elsewhere within the wind sighting micro corridor, wind micro sighting corridor, or removed from the project.
So let me make a comment about this. Again, Governor Insley asked the council to quote, reconsider the conditions and mitigation in its recommendation in favor of an approach to mitigation that's more narrowly tailored to the specific impacts identified. And then specifically regarding cultural resources, the governor asked the council to consider, quote, "physical, traditional, cultural resources within the leased property boundary." So I did ask the staff to look at physical, traditional, cultural resources within the leased property boundary and identified specifically that found, and we found, the Yakima Nation specifically identified the Weber Canyon as an area of particular concern in an early letter from March 2, 21. I recognize that the Yakima Nation has communicated that the project overall will substantially impact Yakima Nation traditional cultural properties. I still wanted to ensure that there was a specific mitigation prohibiting turbines on the physical property of the leased property boundary. So this is separating this, you know, I see it as separating the mitigation and identifying it as a narrower mitigation, but also to reduce some impact to the Yakima Nation. I am no way saying that it will be considered in any way as sufficient by the Yakima Nation. But I did want to give that explanation. Mr. Young?
Did I understand it to be said that the applicant would have the option of resituating those 17 turbines elsewhere within the project area?
Yes, so the locations of the turbines that have been shown in the project layout are representative examples. The way that this project has or is going for approval is approving the number of turbines that are outlined in the application anywhere within the wind micro sighting corridor, which is shown on the project layout. So the exact locations where the turbines are shown right now is not necessarily where they would eventually be sighted. They could be sighted anywhere within the wind micro sighting corridor pending the exclusion areas that would be imposed by measures like Cultural Resources 3. So this measure would not exclude those 17 turbines. It would exclude the area where those 17 turbines are currently being proposed as well as other areas of the wind micro sighting corridor where there's currently no turbines proposed. But it would prohibit them in the future from being relocated there.
If I could add, that's the same way we described all of the exclusion zones that we have put forward throughout this project. Yes, as turbines would be allowed, except for in these areas.
Right. It's excluding areas, not necessarily individual turbines.
It's not any different than what we've said before on that.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure I understood it, that it would not necessarily result in the total number of turbines for the project being reduced by 17. Again, as you've described it, it's a protection of an area, not a direct numerical reduction in the number of turbines. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would be, I guess, accurate to say that it would result in a maximum of 17 turbines being removed from the project, but not necessarily, if they can find the engineering to relocate those elsewhere within the wind micro sighting corridor, there could be no reduction in production potential.
That is not mitigated in other ways.
Correct.
Right. So, you know, the EIS looked at the whole project and the micro sighting corridor, and there are. And there are several things which affects areas within the micro sighting corridor.
Okay. And then one other question is comparing the original, the original recommendation of the governor, the original SCA with the revision. How many of those seventeen turbines that would be excluded by the buffer at Weber Canyon? How many of those seventeen would have been allowed to have been built under the original recommendation to the governor?
Zero.
But the same, the same is true. It wouldn't be the turbines built. It would have been an area of exclusion.
Yeah, but it but it's sort of a wash then between between the original recommendation and the revision that's being considered. In the original, those seventeen would have been excluded for, I guess, other other reasons, because in the original version, there was not a specific exclusion for Weber Canyon. And so in the revision, that area with those seventeen proposed sites would be affected by the Weber Canyon buffer. But in the original, they would have been affected by something else and would have been excluded by one of the other considerations?
That's correct. They would have been excluded by the version of Species Five, the Fruginus Hawk mitigation, which was at that point intended to cover a variety of resource impacts.
For those who haven't followed specifically who is talking, although it's clear on my screen that it was Mr. Lenny Young from the Department of Natural Resources, and it was Sean Green on our staff who were introduced as they began speaking. Are there any questions?
My my little hand hand icon seems to automatically go down after about 10 seconds. So I I just disappear. And thank you. Thank you for those answers to my questions.
Yes. Okay. Is there more that we want to? Does anyone else have questions on this particular mitigation on the Weber Canyon? Okay. Let's move on. Yes?
Chair Drew at Ed Rose, could I ask a question related to turbines before we leave that question? And this goes back to the original. There was in the original proposal, there was taller turbines versus the shorter turbines. When we're talking number of turbines, we still aren't talking which specific type of turbines we're talking about, are we?
So.
And do we ever, do we ever decide on the shorter versus the taller?
So the applicant's proposal to us, as is relatively common with any wind facility that comes to FSEC has an option of a taller and a shorter turbine. They also need to be looking at what the latest technology is. So in our process, the EIS covers both options, but does not require the applicant to settle into one option. Because things change in this industry quite a bit, and some turbines that they have used as examples will be out of production. So there's a number of different factors, as is so it actually made a very complicated review process, because we did look in the EIS at the proposal for both numbers. And you will see that broken out through everything. We kind of revert to looking at the proposal with the most number of turbines that is shorter, because it would have the mitigations have more impact per turbine. And so we tend to only show that, but it is considering either option. Is that more or less correct, Mr. Green?
Yes, and I I would say specific to the most recent mitigation measure that we are discussing, the seventeen turbines, that is seventeen for both Option One and Option Two. So there are more Option One turbines, the shorter ones that are proposed, but in this case, the number is equivalent for both options.
And if if I could jump in for the record, this is Amy Hoffkmeier. Just to reiterate, the exclusion area would remain the same regardless of the turbine type for each of these mitigation measures. And so related to Councilmember Young's question, the the language in the draft as presented to council is focused more on an exclusion area rather than a specific number of turbines.
Okay. Let's move on to the next difference between the original SCA and the proposed changes.
Sure. And again, for the record, this is Sean Green, and the Cepa Specialist for FSEC. The final mitigation change that is included in this updated version of the SCA is labeled as Public Health and Safety II. It is in, has been put in to mitigate project effects on aerial firefighting abilities within the area. The Department of Natural Resources has informed FSEC that their aircraft provide a standard quarter-mile standoff area for any tall structures when in operation. When the aircraft are in operation. So this measure would provide a quarter-mile buffer around the maximum extent of any wildfire that has occurred within the proximity of the project lease boundary since the year 2000, since January 1, 2000.
So a couple of questions on this. First, when we had a interaction with the Department of Natural Resources, we were talking with them about the aircraft that they use.
That's correct. They they described that both their helicopter and fixed wing aircraft are provided with the same quarter-mile buffer standoff distance.
Thank you. Are there other questions from council members? Mr. Young?
Yeah, I I think the only place where Mr. Lane hedged a little bit on that was he was referring to most of the aircraft that DNR uses, helicopters, the air tractor, fire bosses, probably the scoopers and the twin jets or excuse me, the twin turbine planes, the Q400s. But he was not referring to the what are known as Vlatz, the very large air tankers like the converted DC-10s in terms of the the quarter-mile buffer.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And DNR did also state to us that when it comes to an operational basis, the pilots have full ability to increase that standoff distance based on what they feel would be safe. So the the point two five miles is the minimum that DNR mandates, but if the pilots on the operation phase want to increase that standoff distance, they can do it to any distance that they feel comfortable.
Thank you for those clarifications. Are there any other questions? Mr. Young?
I I recognize very much what was just explained really well about how the the mitigations are protecting areas and and not specifically turbines. But we've got a lot of maps with dots on them that are that we've been using for comparison. And so if you look at the number of proposed turbine locations that would have been viable under the original recommendation to the governor, and then the number that would be viable and available to the applicant under the revised recommendation to the governor that's being considered, what's what's the difference? How many more turbines of those original turbine locations come back online and become available under the revision compared to the original recommendation of the governor?
So the issue with that is it's dependent on the availability and viability standards in the the new version of Species Five. It is potentially the case that the exclusion area from the the version of the SCA submitted to the governor does not change. If the determination is made that all of the historic fruginus hawk nests are their nesting sites are available and there is viable habitat, then they would all retain that two-mile buffer, and there would be no change. The the exact number of turbines or exact acreage of the wind micro sighting corridor that is now newly or or reavailable to the applicant for sighting, I I can't give you an answer. For for this specific measure, Public Health and Safety II, seven of the proposed locations, both for Option One and Option Two, would be excluded by this measure, and those were both excluded, or all seven would have been excluded by the original version of Species Five.
So there's a hard exclusion, if you will. And then there's the exclusion if dependent upon the viability of the fruginus hawk nests and the habitat. I'm kind of shortening the words a little bit there, just for the sake of making it easier to talk about. So then, is there an overall number of what you would see on the map now in the exclusion zone other than those which might be eliminated because we find there is there are viable nests and viable habitat?
I have that information available. Percentages of the number of proposed turbines, I don't have the exact number of turbines, but the version of Species Five that was submitted to the governor would have eliminated the the locations of forty-eight percent approximately of the turbines and about 12% of the solar arrays. The hard buffer, the hard exclusion area for Species Five now would eliminate about five and a half percent of the turbines and 6% of the solar array footprint. The the difference between those two numbers, again, well, the 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 current exclusion area could increase depending on that that definition of available nesting sites and viable foraging habitat.
So let's let's take it to the a broader level to answer this question if we can. As we look at these four measures, well, that's the measures that eliminate have exclude major components. That is fruginus hawk, the Weber Canyon, and the arrow, Public Health and Safety II, the aerial firefighting. If you were to look at them in total, and I'm talking about only the point six mile for the fruginus hog, some of those overlap.
Correct.
So if we are looking at the total number, I'm hoping I'm getting to the the answer to your question, Mr. Young, by the way. The total number that would be eliminated on those, leaving out the future determination of the viability of the nests in the foraging area, how many would that be?
I don't have that number available right now. It's displayed in the figure that the council had access to from the July council meeting. I could I could refer to that figure and come up with the number, but I don't have it available right now.
Okay.
Could I could I throw something out to see if this makes any sense at all based on what I just heard? If if we took like a starting point number of turbines in the original proposal, I think the max that was proposed was something like 222. And I think you said that under the original recommendation to the governor, forty-eight percent of those would have been excluded. That's 106. And that's down to five and a half percent under the revision. That's 12. So the difference to me looks to be just ballpark numbers is that there would be 94 additional turbines that were not available under the original recommendation that would be available under the revised recommendation. Does that sound ballpark? Am I on the right track with that?
So two points on that. One, some of that that 94 or approximate would potentially be excluded by Cultural Resources III and Public Health and Safety II, the the measures that talk about TCPs and aerial firefighting. There might be some overlap there, so I can't give you exact numbers on on how many turbines. And then the second part is of those 94 turbines, they are not necessarily being allowed with this current version of Species Five. They may be allowed depending on the determination that FSEC makes with the PTAG's guidance.
So the number, the numbers you gave me or gave there, the 48% and the five and a half percent, that just that just flowed from fruginus hawk protections?
Sorry, could you say that last word again?
Yeah, the the 48% was was that a a was that a percent of the originally proposed turbines under the original proposal to the governor that would have been excluded for all reasons or just for fruginus hawk reasons?
So it that 48% would have been excluded by Species Five, which was ostensibly a fruginus hawk mitigation measure, but it was being used to address multiple resource impacts.
That's right. And then the five and a half percent is that also with the under the revision, the five and a half was that with that also also flow only from Species Five? Because it seems like you added the the Weber Canyon turbines onto top of that five and a half percent?
Correct. That was a desire by the council to kind of split up the mitigation to address specific resource impacts. So the five and a half percent is from the current version of Species Five, and that is intended only for reduction of frugus hawk impacts. It would have a mitigative effect to other resources such as visual and TCPs and all that, but that is not the intent of that measure.
Sure.
I think there are, if I could just time in here. I think there are specific turbine numbers for each of these three measures on some information that we received. Some of them overlap. But as I recall, can you pull, can somebody pull that up? Ms. Moon, are you tracking me?
What is it that you're looking to be pulled?
I'm I'm looking for the specific numbers. I can I know you're trying to get how many still remain, but I have an easier time finding out remembering the numbers that are, how many would be are in areas that would be excluded? And I think it's about 35.
Yeah, so if you so there's about 12 turbines being excluded by Species Five. There are 17 being excluded by the Weber Canyon mitigation and seven turbines by the aerial firefighting combined. That number is 36. But again, there's some overlap there. So it's probably a little bit less than 36, but somewhere around that number.
Okay, so so a better a better comparison, again, if I'm trying to integrate this just from my own understanding, a better comparison would have been that for the way that the original recommendation went in, 106 turbines would have been excluded. And now 30, 36 would have been or be excluded. So the difference is about 70, 70 turbines. And you compare that to what we what we started out for. I'm I'm getting an idea of the difference between between the first recommendation and the revision that's being considered. So that, thank you for walking me through that. Really appreciate it.
And again, that's that's total exclusion. It's not taking into consideration what the actual review of the site and the viability of frugus hawk nests are.
And what I thought I Yeah, what I what I also heard is that number 36 could go up depending upon the status that was determined for the total array of fruginus hawk nests that are out there on the land. That number could go up significantly depending upon how the the status of each of those nests was determined to be.
Correct.
Yeah, I would say it's it's almost certainly going to go up. Just the extent of how how much it goes up is is still to be determined.
Great, thanks.
Where are we? Is that the last?
That that is all the changes.
Thank you. A lot to discuss, and I think all of this is good because these are questions that everybody has. Are there any other questions from council members?
I guess I just want to mention, this is Eli of Ecology, that, you know, to me, the number of turbines is important, but it's certainly not the only the number of turbines is important, but it's certainly not the only actor in weighing our decisions. So I was also one of the people that asked, asked to look at Weber Canyon, for example. So if we're more narrowly scoping the mitigation measures, they're just different between choice A and choice B. And I think it falls on us as the council to provide the suite of mitigation measures that we think does the best job, meet the spirit and intent of what FSEC and all of us do. Protect human health and the environment, uh, you know, make sure there's a viable energy pool in the state, moving to cleaner energy sources, et cetera. So me, it's, it's a little bit apples and oranges in the big picture to compare the two. It's we as a council need to, right now, my mission is to make sure we, we provide better mitigation measures that will do the best job. Make the project viable and to protect those resources we're trying to look at carefully. About it, you know, so for example, that's one reason I wanted to look more closely at Weber Canyon.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's true as we separated out to look at the mitigation members more specifically. We are dialing in on what those impacts are. And I do think that specifically on the frugus hawk, what we're looking at is really trying to establish, and in fact, in much of the environmental ones, an approach which is adaptive management. And it's very hard to dial in specifically um, at this stage before micrositing is done on the final determination and the adaptive management that's really best practice, if you will, in this type of environment. I think an agency has a much easier, an agency without this type of process has, has a lot more not. It's, it, it's just very difficult to, to pinpoint, I guess I'll say, at this point in time. But the intent of adaptive management is a high level um, concept that's throughout our environmental process. Um, and that's what we're trying to achieve here as well as meeting the goals of the future that is the balancing act within our, our statute. Are there other com- comments? Questions? Ms. Brewster?
Thanks. Um, I guess, uh, one of the, one of my concerns with this particular approach is, is the unknowns and the effects of it. So it's, it's really hard to gauge the impact we'll have when it's unknown whether a particular nest eliminates a number of, excludes a number of turbines that are particularly visually impactful. Since that we don't really address its visual impact specifically with this. So I guess I'll, I'm just throwing that concern out there as I, as I'm considering. Beyond that, I would like to express my appreciation for staff and all the work that you've put into the original proposal and this reconsidered proposal. I really do appreciate all that you have done. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Bumpus?
Thank you, Chair Drew and, and council members. Uh, for the record, this is Sonya Bumpus. This is just a, a comment, a general comment, uh, after listening to the discussion today, very good discussion today uh, between council members about what's before you. As the SEPA responsible official, I just wanted to comment that I am hearing that there's just a lot of concern and question around the sort of the deficiency in certitude, right, around number of turbines that are permitted, number that actually get uh, put into uh, use and these kinds of things uh, after the micrositing process is complete. And I thought of a, an, a section of SEPA in the SEPA rules where it talks about, it's in uh, SEPA rule, uh, Washington Administrative Code 19711660. And it talks about the substantive authority and mitigation that an agency does in considering an action, a proposed action. And one of the things that's interesting is that it talks about identifying adverse environmental impacts, but also ensuring to the extent that you can, you know, that you are developing and applying mitigation that's effective, but that is also attributable in terms of the adverse impact from the action itself, right? So I thought of that because I think the, this sort of adaptive management approach that's baked into the mitigation before you, it helps us to achieve that. It looks at the area after these criteria are developed, talking about Species Five, right? And you're able to then determine what is going to specifically trigger that criteria. And then of course, we all know, we've, we've already talked at length about how that, you know, how that plays out with the PTAG and such. But it's actually in the SEPA rules. And I think that while there are some unanswered questions about this right now, that adaptive management approach, the use of the PTAG allows us to get down to the impacts that, that we identify once we're able to in the micrositing process in these particular locations. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Um, I'm reminded that at the beginning of the meeting, we didn't ask the staff to go over the public comments that had come in, or do you have a summary of the comments? I know that all the council members have read them because I can tell from our conversation that they have, uh, because I've read all of them. So I know that there were, um, do we have an exact count of the number of comments?
I can look really quick.
Okay.
So we received from the public 123. This is Andrew Grantham for the record, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, and then for, we received one comment from the accommodation, one comment from the applicant and three comments from party member, um, TCC.
That's Tri City Cares. That's Tri City Cares and those are the adjudicative parties. So um, I am quite sure that all the council members have read them, but for the record, I will um, make sure and state that those are the comments that we received. So are there further questions or comments? Again, our intent is to find a time because we had an, it was unexpected that we had one council member unavailable today. And so we will be looking to have a time next week where we will actually conduct a vote on this SCA amendment. Okay? Any other questions or comments? If not, oh, Mr. Young?
Yeah, I'd just like to add my thanks to staff for doing a lot of work in a really short time. Very high quality what we got. Appreciated the good communication. So thank you for the, the great staff work, uh, as always.
Thank you. Agree. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.